Tilmann Fifth Ward City Councilwoman. And this workshop today is in regards to snow wa- I'm sorry, snow removals for sidewalks. As we all know, this past few weeks, we was bombarded with a lot of snow in Michigan City. And I first want to say to all the hands on deck, the street department, the sanitation department, the fire department, anyone that had to go out there to assist the street departments in plowing the streets, the main streets, things as such, thank you. We appreciate that. But there are a lot of other concerns, not only as councilperson, but as hearing from the constituents within the Fifth Ward and throughout the city, due to the lack of the snow removal and the questions of having snow removed off of sidewalks. And is it city property? Or is it residential? Or the occupants' responsibility of clearing the sidewalks or the adjacent and what is considered the adjacent from your property and the city property? So I called everyone all together to see if we can come up with a solution because of the safety and the need that is needed within the city of Michigan City. Because what we've seen these past few weeks was horrific. Even though we've had snow worse than what we've dealt with these past few weeks, but there needs to be something put in place and some additional assistance for the street department once they have cleared the main, the priority routes first, the main streets, then the side streets and things as such to see if we can provide them with the manpower that is needed and with the equipment that is needed to execute such a plan for a snow removal for sidewalks. So I'm open to hearing everyone else's concerns on how we can see if this is something that would be feasible. And I'm glad to see Control- the Controller Ms. Hoffmaster is with us as well. I have reached out to the street department. I've spoken with Mr. Smith. I've spoken with Mr. Cuss as well. I've sent out numerous, well, I've sent out two emails that went out to the mayor. The first one, this is not something that just popped up. And that was on February 2nd. Then I did another one because I did not get a reply back on February 22nd to meet with him. But due to circumstances, I was told that he was unavailable to do so. But yet, this is not something that I think that needs to be put off another year. This is something that Michigan City and the residents has been dealing with for years back. To my understanding, that as far as sidewalks goes, at one point years ago, they had the Kubota's that was able to do sidewalks, but then only specific sidewalks in certain areas was getting plowed. And tho- the way those things was done back then has to stop. So the works- the purpose of this workshop is finding out the logistics on how we can do this. What is the equipment that the street department needs to execute this? And what manpower is needed to do this? And as far as the legalities go, as far, as far as can the city or is the city responsible of removing the sidewalk, shoveling the snow, plowing the snow off of the city sidewalks adjacent to personal residential property? Those are things that has been looked at. And we also have Attorney Myers along with us as well. Mr. Smith, if you wouldn't mind, in regards to our conversation, how do you foresee? Or what would you recommend if this is something that would be doable with your staff, with your department?
First, you know, I would like everybody to keep in mind, when we have a major snow event, the city is divided up into eight main snow routes and two cul-de-sac dead end routes. Usually if we, we are currently staffed with 19. During that snow event, I think we were down to 14 employees. And now, what would have to happen is if it was feasible in the future to do sidewalks, we would have to have, maybe least, I'm thinking, three. And in order for that to happen, as after a 24-hour period, they would have to get to the sidewalks. It may be usually when you do sidewalks, you don't go to the sidewalk until it's over four inches of snow. So you're basically looking at over four inches of snow. That's when we'll go into sidewalks, if that was the case of doing snow removal on sidewalks, with the current personnel of three to four employees. But of course, the budget would have to support that, if that was the case.
That's provided we have the equipment to do it. Because one, right now, this is the first or the second time I've heard this. Sean and I have talked about it. As far as equipment goes, we don't have any equipment that would- first of all, what sidewalks are we talking about?
Well, for right, right, overall, it would be, it would be wonderful and everybody's dream if they all could be done. But realistic, but realistically, I went out and canvassed the areas within my ward and some neighboring wards. And one of the problems was there, there's residents and people walking in the streets. They couldn't access the sidewalks. They couldn't access the ADA push buttons at the intersections. The fire hydrants were covered in snow. I, I have pictures of this, but everybody traveled throughout the week, the past month, to see everything that I'm speaking of. The bus stops, the school bus routes, children standing in the streets waiting to catch the school bus. That's a safety hazard. That's a concern. That's a concern for the constituents. And that should be our stance and our concern as well. So I'm wanting to find out what can we do to rectify this? Of course, we're in Northwest. We're gonna get hit with snow. Don't know the grade of it, but we know that it's coming. So let's get in front of this instead of waiting till November of 2021, the end of this year, and be having the same conversation.
There's a, in the past, and because of the COVID, we didn't have them this year. In the past, we've had the trustees from the prison that would come out and they would clean the bus stops and the ADA areas off for us. This year, we couldn't because of the pandemic. Then they, I have talked with them several times. They're willing to come back. But they were, for some odd reason, they were told never to come back at one time before my time. But they were a big asset to Michigan City. And they did a lot of that work for us. Didn't cost us a dime and they were glad to do it. That's something we can probably reach out again when this pandemic slows down a little bit. But I understand what you're saying. And I, I bet, I helped plow snow as well out there for seven weekends in a row. And I know what, what's going on. The problem is, is what Sean was mentioning. Right now, we don't have the personnel or the equipment to go out to do that. And if we did, it would be a lot easier. But again, if that's all we had to do, four, maybe four or five guys could be able to do it. But if you want all of them, you're talking six guys maybe and about five pieces of equipment.
And when you speak, Mr. Cranston, when you speak of equipment, you're speaking of the Kubota's. So how many equipments to do such a thing would you need? For example, I would be, I'm aware that it should be something, what is a heated cab, something that will sit on the sidewalk and something actually that not just push the snow, but the snow needs to be blown. So because the snow falls differently as how the snow piles up as it blows out, instead of opposed to pushing it to the side and it mounds up?
We have, right now, we don't have those equipment. The Kubota that we have that would fit the sidewalk is too small and it's a four-wheel drive. The other Kubota that we have is too big. It's a grass cutter and be too wide to go down the sidewalk. And we don't have a plow for it. The machines that we have looked at, one of them comes with a heated cab. And it comes not only with a blower, but you can also get a brush attachment, which is a good idea because you wouldn't have to blow it out the street after we got it off the sidewalk. And it comes with a blower and you can get a plow with it as well. But those machines are not cheap. But it's a good utensil to have. And it would do what we wanted it to do.
Okay.
It's a one-man deal. It, Sean has information on it. They even have attachments that we could even put slurry on the sidewalk, salt slurry on the sidewalk. There's an attachment for that even, if, if it needed be to, to try to keep the ice from forming on it. But again, we're talking, would we have part-time people? Would they be full-time people? If they were part, if they were full-time people, they could be utilized in the summertime to also help pick up leaves and, and all the other stuff we have to do in the summertime and help road patch as well. Our equipment is getting old. It hasn't been, some of the servicing was not kept up on it. And we have a heck of a time to try to keep it going. And the reason why I say at least maybe three or four pieces of equipment, if something has to be serviced or happens to break, that's a piece of equipment you don't have. Or if somebody calls off or they're sick, that's a personnel we don't have. So I kind of look ahead and say, okay, if I need five, I would like to have six. Because even if I give him a shovel, let him shovel something out of the way, he's getting that snow out of the way. So I'm a little broader than what, what, I have a little broader spectrum on what we should have than, than Sean does. Because I'm looking at the long run and I'm looking at, we may, the way this, this weather is getting to be anymore, I'm looking at bigger snows in the future. I mean, if Texas can freeze, we don't know what we're gonna have coming towards us. I have been in Michigan City when there was 18 inches of snow on the ground in two days.
And so with that being explained, do you have any idea of the approximate, the approximate cost for such equipment?
Sean, did you bring that with you? I'm at home because I didn't have a chance to go in today.
Yes, I recently went out and I got three separate quotes. The first one, I went to Frontier out of 421. It was for John Deere four-wheel drive tractor with a B-plow. Same thing, a snow brush. That quote came to 37.5. I also went to Riggs in La Porte. Heated cab, four-wheel drive, snow blower on this one, attachment, blower. This one came to 41. The company that we were looking at, we went online. The same as I have previously stated, this one was slightly a little bit higher. This came to 42. But this one was guaranteed to go through over a foot of snow. The other two was roughly around eight inches, eight to 10 inches. Now, the only thing I would say with a blower, I would be careful, especially going down to that Franklin Square, that business sector. I believe the last thing we would want to do is, you know, blow snow either into the street or blow snow onto the businesses. So you'd probably be looking at a broom at least.
Yeah, you have to have a brush for that one.
Okay. Okay. Controller Hoffmaster. With that being said, and as of right now, you, it was indicated that we do not have funds in the budget to support such a purchase for this type of equipment at this time. Would you be able to look further to see if funds could be appropriated from any other source? Whether it's from the redevelopment or from the riverboat funds? And then do we, and then do we have a, do the city have a fire protection fund? To where it could be utilized from there?
No, we do not have a fire protection fund. Redevelopment has no money. They receive all of their money from the city. And, and nothing is appropriated. You would have to address that with the mayor if he would want to initiate an additional appropriation. But it was my understanding that we're trying to build the riverboat up, not keep spending what we're bringing into the riverboat.
And, and that I understand. And, and I'm glad that you pointed that out. Because I sat in, I was a part of the sidewalk workshop the other day. And $100,000 is being appropriated for sidewalks. And hearing Mr. Wright speak, he said there was nothing in place. Council just came. This is what their ideal was. They presented it. There was no studies, no nothing. $150,000 was presented. But you said that the only amount, I'm sorry, let me rephrase that. That $100,000 would be more feasible and that's what they went with. And that was an appropriated funds. And I understand that you're saying that this is a conversation that also needs to be executed with the mayor to see if he's willing to have those funds appropriated from there for such a project as this one, correct?
The mayor, the mayor came to me about the $100,000. I did not go to the mayor.
No, no, that's fine.
The mayor came to me and said he wanted to do an additional appropriation for $100,000. So if you go to the mayor and he tells me to put together an additional appropriation for X dollars, I will do what the mayor asks.
Right, and I understand. And I'm just pointing that out to say that there was funds being, was able to be appropriated for that project, which I will be presenting something again to the mayor, even though I understand that his, his stance is that, oh, we're out of the snow right now, okay? But we're gonna have snow come end of 2021 in November. We need to be proactive and not a reaction to this. And I don't want to see going into 2022, where the council is still having this conversation. Or better yet, the city gets sued or the liability of someone getting injured because the bus routes, the school routes have not been plowed out for the safety, for the people, the students, the children of our community. So something has to be put in place. It needs to be put in place. We can't continue to move forward with these conversations and nothing happens from them.
Excuse me, Councilman Tillman. Just a, maybe an option, maybe instead of spending, you know, expenditure like these $40,000, maybe something we could look into could be like maybe a company, a service and do it as on-call, as needed, maybe. It's snowing, it gets, it hits, it's getting ready to go eight inches. We call the service in and then they come out on-call as needed. Then they clear the sidewalk, possibly.
Okay. Councilman Dabney?
Yeah. When this all came about, I actually sent an email in and, you know, didn't get a response back. And I was talking about possibly contracting these services out. So it saves us from, from buying equipment and running into the riverboat fund or whatever in terms of spending all this money, but contract this out. And to do all the sidewalks in Michigan City, that's gonna be a heavy lift. We're gonna be putting five, six people out of this department to be doing that. That takes them away from maintenance of vehicles, all kinds of stuff going on. So my concern is, you know, obviously the cost. But I was, I sent an email. I didn't get a response to it. But I was saying possibly contract out for somebody to come. And I was concentrating more on, on the bus stops and in those areas like that. And, you know, I was looking up some stuff in regards to code. And I looked at Muni Code, section 86 dash four. And it just talks about duty to keep sidewalks in repair and free from nuisances. And no owner or occupant of a budding land so failed to keep sidewalks in repair and free of any nuisance. Would snow be considered a nuisance? Would that mean that businesses along Franklin Street, along Michigan Boulevard are responsible for their own sidewalks? People here that live in my neighborhood, are they responsible for cleaning the, the snow off their own sidewalks? But, you know, the, the goal is to try to make sure we get city to be able to do that. I don't know of any city that, that goes and plows all of their sidewalks. That's a big lift. So, I mean, I was just, just, my thought process was concentrate on those bus stops to make those safe for our people who may be waiting for the bus. But contract that work out somehow or use the labor as Cranston said regarding the prison workers coming in. That, I would be in favor of something like that.
Yeah, that, that's an option. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. But that's an option that we can have. And we would have it now if it wasn't for the COVID pandemic because the prisons were hit hard with it. So they wouldn't let them go out at all. I was also thinking of maybe a small lease program that maybe we could lease six months of the year. Maybe lease it from October and till March. We can go that route and see what we could come up with that. But then again, we're talking about personnel. Are we able to afford the personnel that we would have to hire to do this work?
Another thing that I would like to suggest, what could be too, is the seasonal help that we, that the city obtained to where we can put them on a standby, on-call for those months.
Oh, yeah. They, now, they took Vector away from me. They're gonna be a part of the park department now. And I don't know if they would let us get some standby people or not. I'd have to talk to the mayor and see which direction he wanted to go with that. But that's an option as well.
Well, we need to be careful with the seasonal help.
Right.
Because if they work too many hours during the year, the city will lose their seasonal status.
Okay.
So that's also a consideration that, that, that we need to keep in mind.
Yes, Councilman Don, Chris Valiski.
Yeah, I would like to say that as far as what Councilman Dabney said, if talks really get serious about shoveling everybody's sidewalk within Michigan City, that would, that would probably have to be a contracted-out type of work to be done. And, you know, just to take a step back, I don't think we're talking, correct me if I'm wrong, we're not talking here about a two-inch snow or a three-inch snow that, you know, others is gonna go into motion. We're talking about a major snow event like we had. Because when the snow stopped, I had 18 inches of snow in my front yard. And lungs, you know, the sidewalks were filled up. And, you know, we're talking about a major snow event. Now, when that happens, according to the snow ordinance that we have, there was supposed to be a snow removal coordinator put in place. And there's supposed to be a plan put in place that all the departments are right in line and everybody knows what they're supposed to do. And I know just by looking at, you know, what, what's transpired, that that's not, that's not the case. And I agree that with Councilwoman Tillman, that we need to get something in place. You know, whether we get it in place in a month, two months, but certainly by late summer at the latest that we get all this put together. Now, just a couple of suggestions that I have, and especially for a major snow event like we had. I take, for example, fire hydrants are covered up with snow. Fire department knows where the fire hydrants are at. Why can't the fire, you know, they send out one crew in a truck and say, you know, start looking at the fire hydrants, start clearing them. If, if a fire comes up or an emergency comes up, we'll call you on the radio and you guys go and respond to the incident that's taking place. Okay? The other thing, same thing with the bus stops. I mean, firemen can go out and do that. Refuge workers in the afternoon when they get done with their routes. I believe they have two or three hours in the afternoon once they get done. Or whether they have, you know, one hour or an hour and a half. Grab a shovel and go out and clear all the bus stops on Franklin Street or Michigan Boulevard. To me, there's a lot of options. And I, I think that decisions have to be made and direction has to be from the administration to tell these department heads, okay, when we get a major snow event, I want four people from your department. I want sanitary district. There could be plowing this. There could be clearing Michigan Boulevard. Street department, go clear Michigan or Franklin Street. And we kind of work together in getting this, getting this done. As far as the streets, the main streets that I think should be looked at first are for sure Michigan Boulevard with the amount of people that use that. And Franklin Street, that should be done. And I agree with Sean, it should be done, you know, within 24 hours, you know, somewhere near. After, after the main thoroughfares are in pretty good shape, you get that. And then go to the downtown area. And then the other thing around the schools. I think the schools, you know, whatever the school system doesn't get done, that the schools go ahead and, or we go ahead and help the schools to get, you know, these areas cleared up. Yeah, but I just think that there's a lot more help that the city departments, I'm not talking the street department. I'm not talking Sean. But, you know, sanitary district, fire department, whatever, whatever department, park department, these other departments, I don't know exactly what they doing in snows. But I just believe by working this last snow event that I think other departments can kick in and help get this stuff remedied. And it's not that big of a deal. I think people are making a bigger deal out of it than it is to get this work done. They just need to put their back to the grindstone, get this stuff done and get it over with. And I agree with Sean. First thing I would do with the machinery, if we're gonna buy machinery, I think we're, you know, we're far enough out of the winter months now that we're gonna be okay now, hopefully. That we don't have to go out and spend this money yet. But that we get, maybe start with two tractors and work with that and see how, see how that works. And then if we need to expand out, then go ahead and buy maybe a third one or a fourth one, depending on what we want to do. But I would certainly start with two and mainly focus on Michigan Boulevard, some of those neighborhoods over there and Franklin Street and the downtown area for the merchants. Thank you.
And also, I would just like to add too, because the snow was not properly removed from the fire hydrants or from the, especially from the sidewalks, the curbs and from the bus stops, that we, we were close of being in violation. We receive federal funds for transportation and we also must remain in compliance. Now, me personally, I wouldn't take that lightly. Nor would I play it that close to the line of not being in compliance. So again, this is a need to make sure that these sidewalks, the ADA are accessible to all the residents within, in the city. And they were not. I mean, we're sitting back thinking that it's okay. I mean, actually, anyone with a disability or anyone that could have got injured, the city could have been looking at a class action lawsuit. But we don't want it to get to that point. That is the importance of having this workshop in that something has to be implemented and it's gonna have to start now. Not next week, not next month, not next year. Yes, Councilman Don, Chris Valiski?
Yeah, Councilwoman Tillman, if I could just add one more thing. Because this here is kind of a, I don't know, kind of a sore spot, I guess you could say, with, with me when I see this happen. And it's mainly with the businesses. And I'm not attacking any businesses or any- And it's mainly with the uh businesses and I'm not attacking any businesses or anything like that, but it's the people that plow these uh lots out. Around the businesses that when they do it, they leave these gigantic mounds of snow on the sidewalk. They leave these gigantic mounds of snow by the crosswalks, you know, cuz they're pushing it off these driveways. Well, I think the city, we need to look at that seriously and say, if if you're gonna hire a plow. To plow your drive area, that snow's gotta remain on your piece of property, not unless you can find. An an open lot or something like that to push that snow out of the way and not be a nuisance for sidewalks. Cuz although the sidewalk may be cleared, you know, because there's less snow than a five foot pile of snow sitting on a sidewalk. The people still have to walk around that big pile of snow and go out into the streets. So to me, something needs, really, we have to do something about that too.
Okay.
Yeah, there's there's a little bit more to it than that because I've seen snow piles as it goes now. They're putting them on the corners and intersections and are making them so high you can't see around them, people halfway in the street.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, Cranston, that's what I'm saying.
And somebody walking or another car coming, they'll run right into them.
There you go.
So, um. If I may address Captain Jeff Lenis Lenuski, are you with um safety and traffic?
Yes, yes.
So based off the conversation that we're having and what your observation has been throughout the city. Would you force, would you be able to say, was that not a safety hazard for the pedestrians?
Uh, yes, in fact, I was I was going to suggest that if you are gonna start tackling these sidewalks in a serious manner that. Uh, maybe you consider coming up with a list of sidewalks, which repeats with sidewalks that. Are on a priority list, kind of what we do with the snow routes, we have about thirty-six designated snow routes in the city. And I believe it's gonna be impossible to plow every sidewalk in the city, but maybe we start with a priority list. And my suggestion would be Michigan Boulevard will be at the top of that list because right now, uh, we have a lot of people using the bike lane to walk. To and from their houses and uh it's a serious safety factor because we have uh, you know. Pedestrians walking in the roadway and we have uh sharing the same streets as vehicles, it's it's a really dangerous situation.
Thank you. So from from this, um, did anyone else, yes, um, Councilman Simmons?
In my other opinion, and I feel that the same is done, if we if the city look hard enough. And everyone is pitching in, we can find the resources. Uh, you know, I. Unless things have changed drastically since I've been in, I worked for the city, I know. Uh, and as far as equipment. Uh. I have two pieces uh circle, we certainly can afford two pieces of equipment. I'm sure. We can find the monies to purchase two pieces of equipment. And why not do it now, be proactive, don't wait, let's not wait until we have another. Hit like we had this past month, uh, next year. It just, it just makes sense.
It would give us time to train the personnel also to use the equipment.
Ah, absolutely, absolutely.
There is a comment, um, Mr. Tom Kovik, Kovik?
Uh, yes, this is Tommy Kovik, I've been in downtown La Porte and I believe their merchants association. They own a couple of ATVs with uh snow blades on and I've seen them buzzing around downtown and they get their sidewalks real clear real fast. So that might be something we might wanna consider uh uh purchasing any with riverboat funds. I s- still feel that, I know this is controversial, but. You know, sooner or later, you might have to consider putting on the wheel tacks, like, I know La Porte, Portage, Valpo, there's about half dozen other uh. Municipalities in uh Lake County that's that has it now, so. Now, I think it's like twenty-five dollars for every registration, fifteen dollars for a motorcycle. So, that's just my idea, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Councilman Paul Chris Valinsky.
Thank you, Paul, am I, I'm not muted, am I, no, um, I uh. Um, I I wanna thank Cranston and uh Sean, cuz I think they uh, under the circumstances. Did did a good job and uh kept the streets open. And a lot of this stuff that we're talking about is a methodology. About getting these major streets cleaned with the backup. And if you, if we remember correctly how they were cleaned up. That the streets were co- the snow was pushed inward to the center lane. And then with the assistance of the sanitary district, they were loaded out. That kept a lot of the snow off of the sidewalks on these major streets. And I I think that. We as a group. You know, we we don't need to reinvent the wheel. Now, I will say that there's one street that's being overlooked, a couple streets. One is South Wallbach Street and Ohio Street. Because the sidewalks are right next to the curb line. And so that, all that snow gets pushed on in front of the houses. So, we can sit here and uh go through the ordinances and and say, well, it's your ju- responsibility. It's your responsibility, we have a snow ordinance, but here is the bottom line. We have an aging population in Michigan City. A lot of these people, you're telling them to go out and remove their snow. And you know, the majority of heart attacks happen from shoveling snow, that's a medical fact. So, my thinking is this, is like what Don said. Is that we make sure that these people are taking care of their own snow and not blocking the sidewalks. Not blocking stop signs and not blocking egresses and ingresses. On the streets and the alleys, so. I also agree that I think that we can find, like Councilman Simmons said that. We have the resources that we don't, we can come up with a good reliable plan. And uh. I also, I also think that we do need to get. Some more help at the street department, they've been picked dry to the bone. And that's why a lot of services are uh pushed away and. We need some people down there, three people, four people. And now they're uh taking the vector control people away from uh. Uh, central services, so those, that's a resource right there, I don't know, you know, if we could. How we could use them or who's qualified to do what, but it's like this. You can, you can qualify people to run these smaller pieces of equipment. You don't need CDLs to run them, and if you get the right utensils or pieces of equipment. Like what Cranston was talking about, that slurry spreader, I think that's good, a good idea. But also you have the attachments you need, and one thing you do need. Is you need them to be four-wheel drive. And you also need to look at how maneuverable and serviceable. The tractors are, their record on before we buy anything, cuz I would rather buy something or. Since we're having this discussion, is that we buy something that we know has a track record. And it's easy to service and it's easy to operate because I have talked to people at work that. Have some of these uh Kubota tractors and they're telling me that they're hard to shift, they're do- doing that or whatever, but. We gotta come up with a plan.
Okay.
So, in saying that. I truly believe that we can, you you know, it's it's not a a big task, but you have to have the resources to get it done. And I I believe that maybe we. I wanna say this about the snow ordinance, no offense to nobody, that, you know, no offense to Captain Lenensky. But I want you to think about this, I live on a snow route. You can't park on that uh when they enact a snow ordinance, so. Where do you put your car? When they enact. One side has to be cleared. And then the other side has to be cleared so you can park there. Um, I'm I guess what I'm getting at, I think that there's a lot of things that need to be looked at and adjusted to make it work. But, you know, we need cooperation with the other departments to to get this done and uh move forward and I I like. Um. Councilman Tillman, I had a put a call into the mayor and I'm still waiting on a call back. On uh, and it was about snow removal.
Thank you, thank you, uh, Councilman Paul Chris Valinsky. So it looks as though that everyone that is on this workshop um this afternoon, um, is the same consensus we are there. That there is a need, there is a concern for the safety for the people in the city of Michigan City. And that something needs to be put in place on moving forward for our winter months of. When we accumulate anything probably over four inches of snow on how that that snow is gonna be removed. So based off of the information, um, and the recommendations. Then I would definitely um like to continue to um um work with you, Mr. Cranston and Mr. Smith. As far as and the other council members that is knowledgeable as far as equipment goes. Um, as to what needs to be purchased and with uh Mrs. Hoffmaster, Count Controller Hoffmaster. Um, to speak with you in finding out where we can get these sources from. I do know that um the sanitation department said that their funding could be utilized. If it was considered um in the in the equipment crisis to where they would be able to assist. So that's something to keep in mind as well.
I have to kind of defend the uh refuse department because this last big snow. Uh, and what we call when we have big snows is all hands on deck. And they gave us every person they could with every truck they had a plow and they helped us plow these streets, they really did.
Yes, they did.
Yeah.
Yes, they did, I I'm aware of that, yes, they did.
They told, they were totally involved, uh, and I even believe the fire department helped out a little bit as well.
Okay, so with that and with the ordinances, the the way the ordinance currently reads. Um, it will definitely need to be relooked at, that is something that I am working on. And um, I hope that I could have the support uh with the councilmen's that is currently on here. Um, and comprising or amending the ordinance. And again, Ms. Hoffmaster, I would like to um schedule a meeting with you. Um, and with the mayor, uh, moving forward to see about um if we have to. Obtain these funds from another source in order to get the equipment that the street department needs. Um, before November of this year. And so, did anyone else have any comments or questions, recommendations, concerns in regard to the snow removal?
Yeah, trade, yeah, Councilwoman Tillman, yeah, uh, just like you said. As far as the uh sanitary district might be able to help out and help purchase a. You know, a snowplow, cuz I had called uh Mike Cuss. And talked to him about this and he said he talked to uh Turney Myers. And he said there may be some wiggle room there that.
Right, I as well.
Yeah, yeah, uh, that they may go, they may be able to do it cuz it doesn't actually fall under the stormwater. Uh, act, you know, where you can spend that kind of money, but that something else can be done and that, you know, they may be able to do. Michigan Boulevard, you know, if they have that piece of equipment, they may be able to just when it starts snowing, come to Michigan Boulevard and then get that piece of equipment up. Or, you know, have that particular individual go ahead and do something else in the city, so. But yeah, but we may be able to get some funding from from the sanitary district.
Let me, I'm gonna just ask this question, uh, this is the for the captain. Um, so MCPD has a snow tractor that I see that is utilized in front of. The police station. I was tempted to come and ask, can they come down the boulevard? I mean, it's a safe, it's a safety issue. I mean. And and what type of, do you know what type of equipment that is?
The only snow equipment I'm aware, they have a uh obviously a pickup with a plow and then we also have a large snow blower, that's the only.
I have, I have a suggestion, uh, I'm thinking, and Sean, if you're still there with us, you may agree. If we had at least two pieces of equipment and maybe two or three individuals that we could hire to operate them. Uh, I agree with Officer Neneski, if we have designated areas that we should hit, we probably could get that done. During heavy snow times.
And and then actually, uh, Mr. Cranston, um, with that being said, I actually. Have begun comprising a priority list as far as streets, and so if there's other streets. Um, that the council men and women within their wards. Um, think that should be on that list as well, I would greatly appreciate if you could uh email those to me and we can add those as well. Um.
I would start, provided we can't get the uh, the uh uh convicts back again. Uh, I would start with saying all the bus stops, if you're, if there's a fire hydrant in your, in that bus stop area, clean it out. And start there with the ADA areas and make sure they're all pushed out. That would help us and help the people as well. Until we get to the point to where we could do more sidewalks or be able to obtain more equipment.
And 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 that and also, um, to speak with the uh school administration. And the bus transportation in regards to the school bus stops. I mean, for Michigan City, there's what, three hundred and eighty city bus stops? But is that all, was that total, if you know, include the school bus stops? Or just the city, that's just the city bus stops?
Yes.
So if the, if school administration transportation department have a map to know all of their bus stops. Those need, we need to find out then what can be done to make sure that those routes. Those areas are clear for those um students to catch the bus.
Excuse me, Councilman Tillman.
Yes.
Um, most of these uh bus routes, uh, if we're gonna do it, I agree with Captain Neneski on the Boulevard, also with Franklin. But they, it should be matched along the eight snow routes that comprise the city and I mean the. Main thoroughfares on these routes, like for instance, uh, your Edgewood area, that would be Cool Springs, Woodland, uh, stuff like that. Uh, Route Three would be Barker Ave.
No, I I agree with you, I I'm 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 saying this separately from those, as far as this is something that may be reaching out. To the school administration about the um school bus stops. Not for the city, but for the school bus, is there something that they can do to implement to make sure that the school bus stops are clear? For where their buses pick up students at.
Right, and then about the water hydrants, um, I haven't met the uh superintendent yet. I'm gonna talk to him about the fire hydrants cuz I know that the water department usually do maintenance. Of the uh fire hydrants, so maybe I can see if they could take inventory, I'm gonna talk to them and see what could be done about the uh fire hydrant.
Yeah, we can talk to the fire chief too.
Yeah.
That sounds great. Uh, yes, Councilman Paul Prisbalinski?
Um, I just wanna remind everyone that we do have on your, uh, uh, water bills. We have a hydrant tax. So with talking about liabilities. I think people need to. We need to focus on who's covering up these fire hydrants. Because as long as I lived at my address, I've always made it a point to keep that fire hydrant clear. And, uh, one year I went down, all the way down Washington Street to the north, to Eleventh and down. And, uh, down towards the, uh, Ames Field. But I guess what I'm getting at is during this snow event. There is a rental house across from me that is, uh, contracted out with snow removal. And they had packed the snow, and I took pictures of this. They had packed the snow around the outlets. So if there was a fire and it was heavily compacted snow, cuz I was out there with a shovel and a snow blower. What, what do you think would have hap- i- is ridiculous?
Yeah, outside rental trucks is bad. They, they, they interfere with us all the time. They, they even shove snow out in the street after we plowed it. That's been an issue for quite a while.
Well, here's how I handled the issue. I saw him over there the other day and I said something to him about keeping that fire hydrant open. But it's just on the same guidelines of thinking about this, is they can't get that hydrant open? And somebody dies in a fire. That, that is also a serious, serious issue. And I think the fire department needs to get involved with this and, you know, they.
That would be, that, Councilman, uh, Paul Prisbalinski, I think that. But, uh, anyone can correct me if I'm wrong, that would be with the fire department and the water department.
Right, right. Well, the, the reason I'm bringing this out is because it, it's nonsense. You know, after all these, after all these years, we know the problems. And these departments need to just say, okay, we identified the problem and we're gonna do something about it. And we're gonna send notices to the owners of this property, just like.
Right.
I know that, you know, I went out the other day and I was cleaning, cleaning fire hydrants.
Okay.
And some that were heavily covered. I know that my, uh, I gotta give kudos to Don. He was cleaning out, uh, bus stops on Franklin Street. Good job, Don.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don Prisbalinski?
Yeah, thanks, uh, Councilwoman Tillman. Uh, question for, uh, Captain Lenniski. Uh, Jeff, so when we get into these situations like I mentioned, where the snow is piled up. From the snow plow drivers, you know, the contracted out snow plow drivers. Uh, is there anything, or, or what does the city council have to do? To maybe get the police department that when they see this piled up on sidewalks, up and down streets. Uh, that's blocking the egress for pedestrians? Uh, what, what can the police department do? Can they do anything now? Can they give a ticket to the, uh. To the business owner for having a sidewalk in that condition? Or do you have to ticket the plow driver? Do you have to see him actually do it? Or, you know, how, how is that even dealt with? If it's dealt with at all?
Actually, I was just reading through that ordinance cuz we do have an ordinance on the books that prohibits anyone from pushing snow. Or causing the snow to be pushed out into the roadway. Uh, I believe you may need to revisit that ordinance because it doesn't say anything about sidewalks. It just.
Okay, so that's what we do, uh, Councilwoman Tillman. We can add that in there that, you know, if anyone's found. You know, piling snow up on a sidewalk, that the plow drivers or the businesses, the businesses will get fined. You know, they can, they can get, uh, cited for it.
But the only downside to that, Councilman, Don Prisbalinski, um, just a matter of opinion is that. That still may occur because if the city is plowing down the main streets of a business. That snow's gonna get put right back on that sidewalk after they, even though it says that you wait. Twenty-four hours or the next day to do the sidewalks, your, your sidewalks. But if you got the city plowing down, it's gonna put that right back on the sidewalk. And I'm saying that because staying right on Michigan Boulevard, it happened, it ha- it happens. And this is just residents, but there are businesses along Michigan Boulevard, they come and plow down Michigan Boulevard. But it gets piled right back up on the sidewalks. I had over three feet of snow on the front.
Okay, just, uh, food for thought, food for thought.
Yeah, the way Michigan Boulevard is configured, there's only one place we can push it. You can't push it in the direction.
You can't put it on the medium anymore.
No, ma'am.
So, well, um, it's about six o'clock and did anyone else have any more questions? Um, recommendations, concerns in regards to the snow walk, snow on sidewalks? If not, um, I would like to thank Mr. Cranston, Captain Lenniski, Ms. Hoffmaster, Mr. Smith. Mr. Meyer, Turney Myers, um, Don and Paul Prisbalinski, Councilman Dabey. Um, Mr. Michael, Mr. Kovik, Mr. Simmons, Mr. Dempsey. Everyone that participated in this workshop. Um, just know that this is not just a conversation falling on deaf ears to the residents and the constituents. Uh, within the cities and within our wards, your concerns is being heard. And for me and for those that, um, is in support of this, we are looking for a resolution. And, uh, moving forward. So I would just like to thank everyone for joining us in this workshop this evening. And everyone have a great evening.
Okay, thank you, Tracy.
Thank you.
Tracy.